In the back, right off the alleyway. Taking a look at that, it makes sense that there'd be sufficient parking. I didn't bring my numbers with me, but I believe that there were two, two or three bedrooms in the house.
It's a two-bedroom on the main.
Two-bedroom, yeah, and so I think they needed to have two parking stalls, which they have. So that's not an issue. Actually, it's a three-car garage, but it's deep enough to go in a house of two deep, so that's not a problem. As far as anything else, looking at the application, there weren't a whole lot of additional items that were going to be included. There wasn't going to be any signage. There is no need for any buffering. Obviously, our comp plan wants to promote business expansion. And also on our end, there's additional occupation tax that you can receive through the use of this property and such. So looking at it, the council or the staff didn't have any concerns. The Planning Commission heard the request at the August 12th Planning Commission meeting, and they voted nine-zero to recommend approval of a special exception of the council. Randy Kim gets it.
Unless somebody has some questions.
Does anyone have any questions? I think you've covered well, and what was in our package just kind of showed everything. So.
Do we have any comments from the public before we take a vote? Recommend we reconvene as City Council?
We need motion to do a. I move to adjourn the public here and to reconvene as a City Council.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, Council? Okay, all those in favor of vote yea, post nay.
Five votes cast jay, no votes cast nay.
I'm going to approve the application for a special exception by Randy and Kimberly Bauer to allow a bed and breakfast slash vacation rental in residential medium-density district. Said property located at 1205 West Third Street, legally described as Lot 9, Lot 14, Hillcrest addition to the city of McCook, Red Willow County, Nebraska. Finding special exception considerations A through I are satisfied.
Second. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Before we vote, like we usually do on special exceptions, in front of you has been placed the special exception findings and determinations form. Each of those must be answered in the affirmative for this to pass. Any single no, your vote is then a no. Please write your answers down on those, sign them, and pass them over, then go ahead and take a vote.
Any other discussion, Council?
Do you have to tally the votes? Will we vote this way?
Well, we'll pass them out when we have any.
Okay.
Sure.
Five yays, no yays.
Okay. All those in favor of vote yea, post nay. You have to do that? Yes. Okay.
You get a W A.
There's your double yea.
Go forth with your double yea.
Thank you for providing the service.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Community.
Okay, well, the next item is the consent agenda, and it's approved in one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda made by the request of any single council member or public in attendance be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Council members, is there anything you want to put there?
I'd like to pull item 3D as in Edward, please.
3D as in Edward, okay.
E.
E.
Echo, echo.
Echo.
Yeah, come on.
Okay, thank you.
Edward?
Edward. How about this staff? Anybody want to pull anything? Okay, how about anybody in the public? Somebody want to pull anything? No? Okay.
On the consent agenda, I make the motion that we accept items A, B, C, D, F, and G.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Vote yea, post nay.
Five votes cast jay, no votes cast nay.
I move to approve item 3B.
Second.
Oh, good evening.
Hi.
The only question I have is, it sounds like your hard work is really paying off in huge dividends, huge. And we stand to have probably the biggest crowd we've ever had in several years. So I question, do we need to shut off the intersection of Norris and F and Norris and H just because of the number of bodies we anticipate?
So right now, what I intend to do is just to fill. Kyle Kenny and I walked around, and we will have enough spots to fill just about eighty-three vendors right now. We do intend to put like the fire safety truck or trailer on the tractor show, the farmer's market on H Street. And then on East First Street will be a few vendors that have trucks or trailers. And then three inflatables that will be free of charge for kids. The food trucks will still remain on G Street. Nothing right now on Norris except for the little railroad train that will just go around there. I'm just shutting off G to F just for, just in case I need extra spots. We're going to leave the intersection up by the library. So when people come down Norris, they can turn west at the library and go over to West First. But I think we'll, we'll still keep, right now we'll close it off. But we'll leave it just so people can turn. I think we should be fine. I do plan on intending on putting my car up there as well, just because I'm going to have to zip around, especially with the Oktoberfest. So I'll put it there so we can kind of block, so it'll stop anybody going through the cones. And I would like to request to have extra cones there, just so there's no gaps. Because that's what I've found in the past, that if there's any gap, that leaves room for people to move. So, and that. That was just one of the things that's been a request for Kyle and his men to give me extra cones for H Street.
You'll have everything we can get.
So, but yeah, I think we should be fine. And then for the Oktoberfest in the evening, I've been talking to my board, and we are planning on parking our cars on that street too, just to block it so nobody can go through, plow through the cones. So we'll have cars blocking with the cones. Because the beer garden was approved to go out into the street. We'll be fenced off.
What's the danger of somebody parking next to your cars thinking that's a parking lot?
Well, we'll be inside with the cones.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I've had people drive around motorhomes blocking my parking lot at the store just to see if I was open. So you got to expect the motor public to do some unwise things.
Right.
I'm just being facetious. If you think it's okay, then that's, that's fine.
Yep, I think we should be fine. That was just, right now we have seventy-six vendors. And so I think we should be fine, but September 1st, we're cutting it off. And so, so we'll be pretty full at that time. We may still have some street space, just because East First is so wide that we can move people to the street too. But we should be fine.
Okay. That's all I had, Your Honor.
So do we have a motion?
I did, and second.
Okay, all those in favor of vote yea, post nay. Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five votes cast jay, no votes cast nay.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation and determination by council regarding a request from Sudo for the city's support of two federal legislative bills approving land transfer of the White House acquiring the land from the Bureau of Reclamation to Frontier County. Would you like to come up here and talk?
I'll come up closer, but I speak loud enough, I could probably go outside and you'd hear me. I am requesting this from the City Council, just the letter of support. We have two legislative bills. The Senate bill is forty-three forty-seven, and the House of Representatives bill is eighty-four thirteen. Both of these bills allow for the transfer of the land only that sits on, that the Marina and the mobile home parks, RV parks sit on, on Hugh Butler Lake and Swanson Lake. Some people seem to think that this might be like a political deal, that they don't want to get involved in the politics of it. But I think everybody needs to understand that we wouldn't even know if this transfer was capable of being done had the Bureau not told us about it. So the Bureau inspired us to go through with this because they wanted to give us an opportunity to remain if we could do it. And consequently, Senator Fisher, Adrian Smith, Representative Smith, and Senator Ricketts, and the other representatives, which since they're back east, I don't know who they are right now.
Mike Floyd.
But have all signed on to this. They're all supporting it. We also have a great majority of the Kansas people, the representative senators supporting it. The bills were introduced on the Senate floor on May fifteenth. They're still in committee. The Energy Committee has to meet and approve them to go back to the floor for a vote. And they think they might meet in September. And I don't want to make fun of them. They've got a huge slate of things they have to take care of. Energy takes care of all sorts of things that has nothing to do with two little marinas wanting their land transferred. Senator Manchin, of course, is the head of that committee and the chair. And Senator Tanner is the ranking member. So what we have been doing is gathering support, quite obviously, for this motion, for these bills. This is not a free thing. And yet Frontier County and Hitchcock County have both pledged that they're not going to use taxpayer money to do this. Because we do have to purchase the land after they come up with an assessed value, which will come back to us. So I want you to understand it's not a freebie for anybody. But the other thing I hear is, well, why should McCook be involved in this? Why should the City Council care? Well, you might ask, Nix Distributing, Gary's Eagle, Malik Oil, Frenchman Valley, Walmart, Embers, Dollar General, Baumgart, Stractor Supply, the REA, Egg Labs, McCook Gazette, Hometown Radio, American Electric, Mechanical Services, Trenton Agency, Pinnacle Bank Agency, Ace Hardware, DNS Hardware, Southwest Implement, Nolan and Yates. And that's just what the Marina, who the Marina buys from. We do not have a sales tax exempt form. So anytime we buy something in the city of McCook, which we do as much as we possibly can in the city of McCook, we pay sales tax on it unless it's food. Those things, I think, you need to be aware of. The other thing you need to be aware of is over a third of our people at Red Willow are McCook residents, own homes here, pay taxes here, buy their stuff here. There's only four families that have either an RV or a mobile home at Red Willow that do not have to come through McCook, Nebraska to get to their place. They stop, they buy, they eat. And that's why. I think that of the nine counties that are actually affected by these two marinas, and southwest Nebraska, northwest Kansas, and northeast Colorado, those nine counties have a complete population of thirty-five thousand plus. That's it. So we don't want to forget how other places forget that southwest Nebraska, northwest Kansas, and northeast Colorado exist. Of those thirty-five thousand, we have been gathering signatures. And of course, thirty-five thousand counts the kids, et cetera. And some of these signatures come by the way, quite obviously. But we have over fourteen thousand signatures. So we'd just like the City Council to join in our request to support this legislation. Thank you. I told Linda I'd be brief. Is that briefing up, or should I keep talking?
Thanks, Sue.
And I do have an example and where the letter should go to, once you guys say yes.
Have other municipalities that you know of taken this step?
I haven't been involved in that. So I don't know.
I think the county has.
I know the counties have, yes. The counties, even the counties that aren't involved have, you know, there's that. You know.
How much land are we talking about? Sue, would you talk about?
Altogether, the two transfers aren't going to be over forty acres.
When you say the Lighthouse Marina's land, how much does that encompass around the Marina? Just?
Just, just the Marina and the mobile home and RV park behind it. And the other part of that is, is that, as you know, the state of Nebraska, the Yaman Parks, originally was our managing partner. And then when they backed out of that, the Bureau took over as our managing partner. But neither of those entities have ever spent a dime in that area. We do all of our own maintenance, we put in our own water lines, we have our own wells. We do our own road. I mean, that's the thing the county was also concerned about. Are we going to have to take care of your roads? Well, nobody else ever has, so probably not. Are we going to have to spend any money on like trimming trees? Nope, nobody else has, so no, probably not. We're, we're just a very, it's a very interesting way this has been handled. But again, I, I don't want to be adversarial about this. The Bureau told us, if you want to stay, do this. And if you don't get it through, you're gone on February of twenty twenty-five. So.
All the trailers would have to be pulled out, right?
The Marina's gone too. Yes, everything's gone.
Everything's gone.
Yeah. On both locations. So any questions? Besides, do I know of any other municipalities that have done this?
Yeah.
I think you're pretty much the only municipality in the whole area.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I would move the McCook City Council to support the passage of Senate Bill four-three-four-seven and House Resolution eight-four-one for approving the land transfer of Lighthouse Marina's land from Bureau of Reclamation to Frontier County, Nebraska.
I will second that. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of vote yea, post nay.
Five votes cast jay, no votes cast nay.
I really appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all the work you've been doing.
Yeah, I thought I was retired.
Thanks, Sue. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation from Erica Bush with West Central Nebraska Development District in regards to properties in their designated area that should be declared a nuisance, properties that should be rescinded from the previous declaration of nuisance, and properties that need a maintenance.
Good evening. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Here you are, there. You can see you.
Good evening. Erica Bush with West Central. Tonight I will be presenting on the twenty twenty-four McCook Nuisance Program. Tonight's agenda, I will be recommending to declare nuisance by resolution on four properties, recommending a motion to abate on four properties, and a resolution to rescind for nine properties. I will go over each of these properties individually. First, I will be recommending to declare nuisance on the following four properties. First property, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-zero-six at eleven-ten West Thirteen. This property, I've had no communication from the property owner, but they have done a tremendous amount of cleanup. What remains left, scrap wood, scrap metal that is not neatly stacked, auto parts to include tires, buckets, barrels, receptacles that could look, could collect water, leave a stagnant, also an appliance. Next property, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-two-nine at eleven-twelve West Twelfth Street. In this property, I've had communication from the property owner. The item is a tattered cover of plastic sheeting along with some crates, barrels, receptacles. Next property, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-three at eleven West. In this property, I have been in touch with the tenant. I've spoken with the property owner one time, but the tenant has been pretty consistent in calling in and checking in. As you can see, auto parts to include tacks. He reached out about recycling, bringing the tire somewhere that wouldn't cost him a fee, but unfortunately couldn't find any place for him to do that. He is responsible, and he understands. And I let him know, says a, it just provides the property owner, the tenant, additional time to clear it up. It's wood, tires, auto parts, receptacles, buckets, barrels. Next property, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-eight at twelve-oh-one West Thirteen. In this property, I have been in contact with the property owner. The items remain a licensed vehicle, as well as tires, scrap metal, fencing, and scrap wood. Next on the agenda, a motion to abate for the following four properties. Property twenty twenty-four MCC zero-six at fourteen-oh-seven Fair Acres. I have not had any communication from this property owner, but they have cleared a lot as well. The items remain metal, auto parts to include tires, car parts, barrels, buckets, receptacles, little bit of scrap metal, scrap wood not neatly stacked. Next property, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-seven-two at twelve-oh-three Missouri. I have not had any communication from this property owner. I have nuisance items that still remain unsecured structure, as well as an unlicensed vehicle. Next property, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-seven-seven at ten-oh-seven Missouri. I have not had any communication from this property owner. The items that remain would be auto parts to include tires. I circled the tires. The items in the trailer are constantly changing, so he's, or they are recycling, so it never remains the same. Scrap wood, scrap metal, plastic sheeting, or tarts, auto parts. Next property, twenty twenty-four MCC one-zero-three at fourteen-oh-five West Sixteenth Street. I have had communication from this property owner. She has cleaned up quite a bit. The items that remain is an unlicensed vehicle, scrap wood, scrap metal, and the door frames. And I'm recommending a resolution to rescind for the following nine properties. Twenty twenty-four MCC zero-zero-eight with parcel ID zero-zero-one-six-one-two-eight-zero-zero, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-one-two at twelve-zero-seven West Fourteen, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-two-seven at ten-ten West Twelve, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-four-four at eleven-oh-nine West Twelve, twenty twenty-four MCC zero-five-two at ten-twelve Missouri, twenty twenty-four MCC one-oh-one at fourteen-seventeen West Sixteen, twenty twenty-four MCC one-zero-four at fourteen-oh-one West Sixteen, twenty twenty-four MCC one-oh-seven at sixteen-oh-four West J, and twenty twenty-four MCC one-ten with parcel ID zero-zero-one-zero-five-six-seven-zero-zero. And in summary, two-hundred-and-fifty-six properties were reviewed. One-hundred-and-ten courtesy letters were sent out. And so far, ninety-seven properties have cleared. Four properties have extensions. Two of those properties, I posted at my last review. One property, the declared letter shows it's still in transit. And then one property is receiving a second letter. Four properties I'm recommending to declare tonight, four properties I'm recommending for a motion to abate. One property is ready for a five-day notice, which would be the last step. We send a five-day notice letter, as well as publish in the paper. And the property owner has five days to clear. If not, that allows us to go on the property and abate. And nine properties I'm recommending to rescind or clear tonight. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any question, Council? Anyone have any questions? Next item on the agenda is to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, approving the designation of nuisance properties as deemed by Western Central Development and as declared in the resolution. Any motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor of vote yea, post nay.
Five votes cast jay, no votes cast nay.
Next item on the agenda is to approve WCNDD's motion to abate for the properties located at fourteen-oh-seven Fair Acres, McCook, twelve-oh-three Missouri, McCook, ten-oh-seven Missouri, McCook, and fourteen-oh-five West Sixteenth, McCook, to be abated. Do we have a motion?
Still moved. Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of vote yea, post nay.
Five votes cast jay, no votes cast nay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, approving rescinding a portion of previously declared nuisance properties as deemed by West Central Development and as declared in the resolution. Do we have a motion? I make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor of yea, post nay. Next item on the agenda.
Five votes cast jay, no votes cast nay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty, amending the city of McCook's code of ordinance by adding chapter seventy-five, section seventy-five point oh-one through and including section seventy-five point ninety-nine under Title VII Traffic Code. I introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-four thirty-eighty by title, and I ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance providing for the amendment of the city of McCook code of ordinance is amending Title VII Traffic Code, adding chapter seventy-five utility type vehicles, prohibiting the operation of all train vehicles, and allow the operation of utility type vehicles on city streets, and sending forth provisions under which utility type vehicles may be operated, to repeal conflicting ordinances and sections, and provide an effective date.
Would you consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty upon its third and final reading? Do we have a recommendation?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty has been read by title. I move to approve upon its third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, Council?
Yeah, did we keep the age requirement?
No, we did according to the state. We did according to the state. We did according to what the state recommended. We did according to what the state recommended.
But it's a motor vehicle and so, under the same laws of the vehicle.
So, there's no age restriction on a ridership than others?
Not here.
No, not with this right.
But under the vehicle law.
You can't, like I said at our last meeting, you can't lawfully put a car seat in a U T V to comply with state law.
Right, but I'm saying it's sort of superseded, right? I mean, if you do have somebody that is required to be in a child safety seat, they would have to abide by the motor vehicle laws.
That would be, I don't think I'd be able to push, or me or Paul would be able to push that one through, because they're doing it pursuant to ordinance. That's, I guess that was my concern. If you guys pass this, you literally can take an infant in your arms and drive it up and down north. That's what you're okaying tonight, and that was my, that was my entire argument at our last meeting.
That's how I understood it too.
I think somewhere along the line, we allow parental discussion. I mean, you could take an infant and ride your bicycle if it's a parent. So, I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
And under the net, Nebraska State statute codifying the definition of a motor vehicle is not a U T V, a motor vehicle, and as such, as Jared said, is bound by, I know I'm asking your opinion, it's pushing a tough spot, but if it's a motor vehicle, any child under the age of, uh, must be in an authorized child seat. So to me, it'd be redundant for us to say, you have to have one. So Nebraska says on any motor vehicle operated on the streets and highways and highways of state Nebraska, under the age of so much, you must be in a child restraint system.
That's what, that's what my thinking too.
We shouldn't have to put it in here, I don't know. Like the other communities did not, I have no idea why they didn't, but I was going over it the last couple of weeks, and I think, well, it still meets the definition of a motor vehicle. And they're bound by those laws.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's was my whole thought process as well.
Hank, are you ready for the question? All those in favor vote yea, post nay.
Does the public have anything to say?
Does anyone out there have anything to say?
The only thing I would say is that, um, you did call the other communities who've had this ordinance in place and asked them, you know, the problems that you guys thought may arise. They didn't know, they didn't say anything about this and the issues that you were concerned about, as well, they said had not come up in their communities. I think if this was an issue, one of the other communities that's had this ordinance for a substantial amount of time would have let us know when the city was calling, asking if there was issues. So I think, I agree with, uh, Mr. Mule and Camp and Mr. Calvin that we should probably be pretty okay on this with the laws that we have currently for motor vehicles.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I thought someone said that you cannot put a child restraint seat in my drawing on that.
Basically, I do.
So, so if you can't put one in there, then it wouldn't be allowed anymore. That's my whole thought process.
It's just to know that you can't ride in there.
So then you can't have a child under the age of eight in a U T V?
Well, there's different, um, criteria with, with car seats, with weight, size, things like that. So, if they don't meet those minimum requirements, then yes. If they need to be in child, child safety restraint, they should not be in the U T V. Under our current laws of motor vehicles.
And that's, I guess that would be my counter to that, is you're really confusing things. You're under ordinance, you're saying, right? Without saying it, that.
Umbrella, right? So we're considering, we're considering this a motor vehicle now. They're allowing these certain things. So that, motor vehicle and U T V, so those laws still pertain to a U T V, right?
Correct.
So that's just how I'm, I'm viewing it.
I'm wondering how all the city attorneys and all of the communities and all these places have, have looked at it, you know, and I mean, it's just, it's not in there. Correct?
Sometimes things don't necessarily get thought of while we're working through this process, just so you know.
And the state of Nebraska was supposed to come out.
The state of Nebraska thought on this, they basically give the cities the authority to do so. Um, and so, we're trying to work our way through this. The problem that we've got is we're not really in a position to do the studies that they can do at the state level or the federal level. And there was a question that was brought up by council member, we, I think, a couple meetings ago, is basically, hey, what do we do about the kids? And that's a legitimate question. You know, and making sure that we have, you know, proper sufficient safeguards in place, so that way if there is an accident, they're not going to be further in any worse situation uh, they would be in, uh, if they were in a motor vehicle. The difficulty that we have and in the research that we've done, um, you know, I know Mr. Muskin, we contacted a couple of different individuals regarding this specific item, and they said, yeah, you know, it probably doesn't fit for these, you know, vehicles. And that's why we put it in specifically at eight, because that's when the seatbelt or the safety restraint required, that's a handle. If I remember correctly, Kevin, I might have you chime in on that one. It's been a long time since I've had a kid, so, a little kid, so.
So, it's weight based, and then, yeah, eight would be where I'd basically be at the end of the weight and size requirements.
There has to be something that says that that particular child no longer fits in that, um, that particular car seat, so.
The, the complicating factor in all this, and this is just, the, the statute does not give a lot of guidance. It just, it just basically says that you can, and these are the things, you know, and restrict or not restrict. And so, the recommendation from the city attorney, based upon conversations that we had, was to go ahead and put that age limitation in there, mainly because of the conversations that we had. Now, how this goes, what happens, I don't know. You know, but it's just a way to maybe C Y A, um, and assure that there aren't issues or problems for the city. Should there be an accident, and should there be a lawsuit? Unfortunately, we gotta thank them, because those things do happen. And just because it hasn't happened yet, doesn't mean that it won't happen in the future.
I have one question. When we have them fill out the form, chief, if we have not responsible for accidents because you're an idiot, can we put them?
You can't, you can't, you can't waive anything on behalf of the child.
You can't waive anything on behalf of the child, that was my question. Cause, you know, I mean, a lot of this is parents' thing.
Yeah, I mean, there's always an assumption of risk, but that doesn't stop it pursuant to.
But even at eight, a kid could be six years old and over the height and size requirements, and they can't ride. But they might meet that, they might be bigger than me, who knows? But I'm just saying, it's really a size and weight requirement more than it is a necessary age requirement. To me, if we're talking about child, I have to deal with child safety seats every day, so. Um, so I get it, and I want my kids to be safe, and I want everyone's kids to be safe. But I think at the, we, we also have some of those laws that are already there. If you can't put a child safety seat in there, and they are, they're underneath the, the minimum requirements, they shouldn't be riding. That's just my thought, and.
They shouldn't be riding?
They shouldn't be riding.
If they're.
If they're not properly restrained, so.
So if they were in a vehicle.
If you, if you ask the kid if he's eight years old or not, they might say yes.
So if you're saying, if it was a vehicle, and I had to be restrained, then I should be restrained into the U T V, or, I mean.
Well, they shouldn't be riding if they're, if they're under the minimum requirements.
I, I'm saying, yeah, okay, now.
Okay, are we ready for the question?
Well, um, okay, Kevin, this is start the first of January of next year?
Correct.
Okay, and that, and the inspection is done by your police department? They have to have their registration, has to be mounted, I mean, all the things. And then it's, it's a hundred dollars, and it's a one-year thing, and at the end of, in December of twenty twenty-five, they gotta come back in and renew it again, right?
Correct.
Okay. And we're doing January first, just to make it easier for us, so that we get this kind of thought through, make sure that we've got everybody at the same year of cycle. It makes it easier for our people, because it is one more thing that we're having with the police department.
One more thing, right?
I mean, we just, we have to get the registrations, the stickers and the forms and. And train our personnel and figure out who's going to be responsible for those things. And where do they get the form from, and?
Right now, they do from the police department, right? That, that works. But we could also use the fire department, because they do the child safety seats, if we're too busy. I like this.
He doesn't look too happy.
I think that's a no.
He couldn't hear what you said.
You have to speak louder, he couldn't hear you.
Just check it in, see if he was there, okay.
I have one quick question. If you have an A T V that's already licensed in another state.
Yeah?
You'd still have to come to.
So anybody that comes in hunting.
A U T V, not an A T V, you're just U T Vs.
So that, yeah, if they come in hunting, they would have to be outside in the city limits to be allowed?
They're gonna stay at a motel. I'm asking you, if they're fully licensed, has all the equipment, do they have to come pay a hundred dollars? To drive in the street, no.
Well, by, by, by law, you would have to. That's the only way that you'd be authorized to, you have to be registered in McCook to be able to operate the U T V. That's state statute, that means states, yeah.
Just checking.
Hi, Alan. My only concern with this is enforcement. Um, on cruise night, there was a four-seater U T V going up and down on B Street. This is cruise night, not, there's not even ordinance passed yet. And they went by a police cruiser, and they weren't pulled over or anything, so. I already have some concerns about enforcement in this ordinance.
Did, was that considered part of the cruise night, a vehicle?
There's an exception for, in ours, for parades.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't know if that would be considered a parade, that's gonna be, again, an interpretation issue, yeah.
City council did not issue a parade permit to the crews on the bricks, guys. Let's don't, let's don't be silly about this. Cruising is cruising, it's not an authorized parade, so. With his concern, it's valid. There's violations going on, it was not enforced, so.
Yeah, it can't be on B Street.
Correct.
Whether it's now or under this ordinance, it can be on B Street. Or highway B three.
I'm ready for the question. All those in favor vote yea, post nay.
State law.
That's state law, so it's hard to be on a highway.
It's a highway, you can't have U T V on a highway. You have to talk to them, at another moment, I guess.
Yeah.
I gotta have to refresh.
I don't know, it didn't come up.
Karen.
Five votes cast Jay, no votes cast May.
Goodnight, guys, thank you.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty is declared lawfully passed and adopted upon publication as required by law. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty-five, providing for the adoption of the budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year. I introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eighty-five by title, and ask the clerk to please read the title.
An ordinance in the City of McCook, Nebraska, providing for the adoption of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year employee classification and pay plan, and providing for an effective date for the implementation of the classification and pay plan. Repealing any and all other ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for a time and date, from and after which this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced.
Okay.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four thirty-eighty-six has been introduced, read by title, and I move to approve upon its first three readings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, is it? I'd like, I had, thought I heard Jared say something, but.
We got three seconds. Okay. Discussion, counsel?
Has anything changed since our meeting last Tuesday?
A couple things in Lincoln. Yeah, and it does create some complications for us, yeah. So at the last meeting, obviously, we talked about what our plan was moving forward. Just to kind of reiterate what we discussed last Tuesday. We have essentially stripped basically all the capital out, have the huge budget, with the exception of one police car, and then some small minor things. Also, we have some obligations, uh, either through leased and own, uh, or similar type situations, that we need to make sure that we continue to make payments on. And so those are included in there as well, too. The thing that we have stressed was, and I know we brought the wage study into the council on a couple of different occasions, the most recent being June, I think, of twenty twenty-four. We discussed the need to implement the findings, I think, at the council, as the data, and, and we are, um, low as far as our wages compared to other communities that are compared to us. Uh, the reason why that is important, uh, or a concern, is that the Commission for Industrial Relations establishes the rules, uh, not us, it's the state of Nebraska that does, uh, that basically, uh, state how cities need to compare themselves to other for purposes of fair wages. Now, we also take into consideration benefits, and our benefits are good. Uh, we're in the top third. We're trying to get our wages to the midpoint, that's gonna require some, um, work this year. And like I've said in the past, our most important asset is our people, not our things. Uh, one of the things that we've struggled with is hiring people. Uh, we've also lost people due to wages. And so we've got to figure out a way to make sure that we're as competitive as possible, and also not in a position where we're ever challenged, that we're having to make unilateral change, especially knowing that the world potentially has changed as far as the ability to, um, account for those kind of budgetary needs into the future. Uh, so just because there's a lid or a cap on property tax right now, it doesn't change or modify the way that the Commission for Industrial Regulations, uh, rules are set, so. So, um, we're still kind of working through our process. I know Tara and Leanne have worked through the weekend, just trying to figure out wage numbers. Right now, I believe we're looking at a levy increase of three cents, potentially, in order to make up the shortfall in the wages that we're at right now, which is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars short, is where we're at. And I think that each cent represents about sixty thousand dollars on the levy, give or take. Did we ever get the final numbers for Redwood County?
Yeah, have not yet.
Okay, so we're still waiting for the final, uh, assess valuation numbers for Redwood County. So once we get that, we'll have a better idea. And then the question is, do you implement the entirety of the wage study at once, or do you hold off? Our original plan was to try to do increments over a period of time, because even, you know, with that hundred seventy-seven dollar increase, uh, to the expenses, we're still going to not meet all of the wage study findings for each of the positions. So we're just gonna do ten percent maximum this year, and then try to make up the difference this following year. But with some of the restrictions that may be out there right now, we need to figure out whether or not that's feasible or not feasible. And we've talked about the possibility of other revenue sources, that's why we talked about games of skill. Uh, that's why we talked about the N P P D modification with respect to that half percent. Uh, that's why, you know, we've talked about, you know, hotel occupation taxes and cell phone occupation taxes and those things, because those aren't property taxes, those are occupation taxes. But that being said, we do need to figure out some way to make sure that we are complying with the state rules. This isn't a, you know, a situation where we're saying, hey, we, you know, we're trying to get more than what we're supposed to, it's a situation where we're saying, hey, well, we're less than what we're supposed to. In order to get where the state says that we're supposed to be, we've got to make some adjustments. And we've always kept our levy low, you know, I know Gene does a good job of kind of following along with where we're at, compared to others, other cities of the. along with where we're at compared to others, other cities of the first class. Uh, usually, we're in the top third. You know, most of the communities in our vicinity that are our size, whether it's North Platte or Ovalo or Holdridge, their forty cents or higher, we're at thirty four cents. Um, and so we do our best to try to keep that property tax request down. We're not spend thrifty. I know I've lost people in the past because we don't add more people or we don't add more things. Um, and that's just the way it is because those are the regulations and the, and the rules of the state that have been, that have placed upon us and that's, and we understand that. It does bother me when I hear some people out of Lincoln say that there's overspend at the local government's level because I would argue that, that that's not the case. I think that we've done a very good job of trying to hold the line. And I'm disappointed when people say things and they don't know all the facts. That's a very disappointing thing for me. Aside from that, I can't think of anything else. I don't know, staff, if you have anything that you want to add? Do you have anything that you want to add? So we'll have our public hearing, uh, on the budget, September third or fourth, whatever that Tuesday is after.
Labor Day?
Yeah, the third. Um, and, uh, um, we have our final reading of the budget then on the sixteenth. So my hope is that we'll be able to kind of get some things figured out. Uh, we actually sat in on a phone conference with the leading municipalities today. I know tomorrow, it's another discussion of LB34. Where goes, who knows? There's concern, I think on a lot of people's hearts right now. Uh, and, and what the, what's trying to be achieved, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit trying to figure out exactly what they're trying to achieve.
I don't think they know what they're trying to achieve at this point.
I, I'm not sure I understand or a lot of people understand. But on our end, you know, we'll continue to try to make sure that we hold the line as best we can, but also make sure that we're competitive, that we comply with state regulations, that we're able to hire people to do the services that we do. Things that the council and, and through the council citizens have prioritized over the years, that doesn't stop. So, um, we'll be coming back to you guys here on September third with more detail.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor vote yeah, post yeah.
I vote Cash Jane, no votes Cass May.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-3086, providing for the adoption of the 2024-2025 fiscal employee cap classification pay plan. I introduce ordinance number 2024-3086 by title and ask the clerk to please read that title.
An ordinance in the city of McCook, Nebraska, providing for the adoption of the 2024-2025 employee classification pay plan. Providing for an effective date for the implementation of the classification of pay plan, repealing any and all other ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for a time and date from and after which this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced.
Ordinance number 2024-3086 has been introduced, read by title. I move to approve on its first of three readings. So.
Any discussion?
On the handout you gave us, there's no hour rate for pool help, is that left? Does that pay position to S1?
Jared, is it right there?
Basket help, yeah.
This current year, we did not have any basket help, so.
And there's S4 as everybody's in the pool, yeah, S4 is the rest of the pool help.
To remove that.
To remove it?
Yeah.
Remove it?
Yeah.
We're removing the pool basket help?
We probably need to just because it was located, one of the things, because of the uncertainties surrounding opening a new swimming pool, we didn't know exactly what we're gonna need for assistance inside. And so we started to add people as the season went on because we weren't able to open up the pool at times because our lifeguards were working inside. And so there's probably about four or five family members that got selected to help out and then were recruited, maybe against their will in some cases, to help out, but, uh, so we will probably need to make sure that we've got that accounted for because one of the things that we were missing out on, we were losing lifeguards, um, because they were being stationed up top at the top of the slides, which doesn't need to be manned by a lifeguard, it can be manned by anyone. Um, and so, um, in order to kind of make everything work and make the rotations work, we added some basket help, pool help, whatever it's called, pool seasonal, to help up top and then also help in the, in the basket room or the, the pool house, uh, with concessions and with those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out, though, here, that's a.
Got you, no problem.
Anything else, council?
Not for the, your honor.
All those in favor vote yeah, post yeah.
I vote Cash Jane, no votes Cass May.
Next item on the agenda is council comments. Does anybody have any comments?
We packed the pool every day it was open, I'm assuming? Except when it got really cold, but I mean. Good. Any other, you have any input on that numbers?
Um, yeah, actually, Saturday, we had almost four hundred people in, you know, that was only one to five. And we were closed for a week because it's all just going back to school or work. And so, uh, three seventy seven, I think is what we logged in on Saturday. Yesterday, we were closer to, um, two hundred, but again, it was closed yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a lot of bodies to take care of. Wow.
Would you happen to have like a total, all the time you're open or something?
Yes, they should have the paperwork on that. I turned in attendance sheets every day.
So sometime, Kyle, could you, I don't, send it to us or something?
What was it? Terry has a spreadsheet. I think the five to twelve was four.
Right around forty five hundred.
Four, around forty five hundred and thirteen plus was about the same. And zero to three was like seven hundred.
So about ten thousand people?
Yeah, pretty close to ten thousand.
In that span of time.
And how many days?
What's that?
How many days?
Are we holding the seven?
July, so, uh, now?
We were planned on twenty five days and we were closed last, um, week, the last week, I think we were closed two and a half days. And then we had the lightning delay one day, so over twenty one days.
And of course, those numbers are disputed because the foundation graciously, you know, is willing to go ahead and, and pay for admission costs. Whether they realized how many people were gonna be there, I don't know, but, um. But, yeah, that's, um, so next year, you know, assuming that it's gonna be a four pay, uh, we'll probably change things a little bit, but that's a lot of people.
So have we determined a price?
We'll bring it to the council.
We'll charge, okay. Good. Thank you for doing a great job up there. I mean, with all those kids and all of that stuff going on and being a first time out, I hear you did a really nice job.
No, it, it really wasn't me. It was the guards and the concession group that came in at the last minute to change things up. It really wasn't me.
Well, thank you.
It was, it was all of them being willing to wait the summer and have a job for three and a half weeks and making it work as much as we could, but obviously we closed early some because we just couldn't, we couldn't fit the, fit the bill. We couldn't, we couldn't, because when you close a section of the pool down.
Yeah.
The occupancy has to come down with it. So all of that factored in and they came in as, as much as they could and it's them. It really is them, not me.
We shouldn't thank them for us.
I, I have and I, um, I tried to share the good comments that I've gotten, um, with them, too.
Also like to give a shout out to Kyle and his, his workers as well.
Again, wasn't me, it was Tyler, Ron and Matt.
It's just great to go by and see all the kids up there having fun.
And I, I've had a ton of positive comments as well, so.
My niece from Fort Collins went on Saturday. She's one of the three seventy seven and she loved it, so, um, it's really, it's really a great asset for her.
We actually had probably close to fifteen college kids come on Saturday.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the meeting of the Community Development Agency. Um, we'll recess as a city council and convene as that meeting.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I move to recess as city council and to convene as the McCook Community Development Agency for the consideration of CDA, uh, agenda at, uh, six thirty six PM. Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yeah, post yeah.
I vote Cash Jane, no votes Cass May.
Okay.